Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen Board of Selectmen's Meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we'll have citizens' input. Seven-ten, Foxborough Board of Selectmen to address victims of William Sheehan. Seven fifteen, Randy Scollins, public hearing, tax rate classification hearing. Eight o'clock, William G. Keegan, Jr., special town meeting warrant review discussion approved. Eight-twenty, selectmen's update. Eight-thirty, Bill Keegan, town manager update. Eight-forty, assistant town manager update. Chris, will you lead us? Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seven o'clock. Is anyone here for citizens' input? Anybody? Going once? Twice? No? Okay. Uh, go right into seven-ten? We have a letter that we would like to read into, into the record. Typically, the chair would, would read this, but I'm gonna ask Jim to read this into, into the record. You kinda spearheaded this and started this, and I think, I think you should kinda close this. And this is, this is something that collectively, we all, we all played a part in, so.
Great, there. Thank you, David. Before I begin, I called up David this afternoon to see if I could say a few words to kinda put this into context, so it's just not a letter. And he gave me the liberty to do that, so, first of all, I, and then I also wrote down some things because I've been accused of blabbering sometimes, so I wanted to focus a little bit. First of all, I wanna thank the people that came here for this agenda item. I appreciate your coming. And also recognize that I know there are people that either didn't wanna come tonight or couldn't come tonight, but they are watching it tonight on cable. And some of them as far away as Florida and New Hampshire and maybe further. So I wanna welcome everybody. I asked David if I could put it in context, two things. For perspective, I kinda wanted to give an overview of the Bill Sheehan situation. And then, secondly, kind of explain why we are doing this tonight, a thought process leading up to this. So, to, to give a little bit of the history, starting back in nineteen sixty-two through nineteen eighty-one, Bill Sheehan established himself as a Foxborough teacher at our middle school, several of our elementary schools. He established himself as a Boy Scout leader in our town recreational swim coordinator, coordinator at the formerly known Coacset River Park. Four years ago, it was brought to this board's attention by a brave victim during our citizens' input. Others came shortly after, and then the allegations were made that Bill Sheehan molested them when they were children here in our town of Foxborough. Following, investigations were initiated, steps made to understand it, and reports and subsequent follow-up occurred. A full police report is on our town website, accessible to all, and can be summarized as saying that Sheehan is currently incoherent and held in a monitored, secured assisting, assisted living facility and is not competent to stand trial. His warrants are held in case this ever changes. As a result, many victims have not received their day in court and have had to deal with the issue on their own with no real closure, if there is such a thing. Since the first victim came to us, the town has come together in a way to recognize this atrocity from the sixties, seventies, and eighties, to work together under the mantra that this behavior will never happen again unchecked. For public awareness and public training, the Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, which many of the members are here tonight, was formed with insight and participation directly from the victims. Our town laws were changed to bring this work forward in perpetuity. We have pending legislature mandating training and reporting for all groups of staff in our town that come in contact with our children, and Foxborough has taken a leadership role for state change through the Massachusetts House and Senate. Good things are happening through hard work and consistent work. As a result of the victims coming forward, hundreds of staff, coaches, private and public groups using our facilities have been trained on recognizing, preventing, educating, and reporting on sexual abuse, and we believe are, and we think we are a safer town for that. So what is tonight about? Some basic functions of our board, centers on budgets, setting public policy, appointing committees, and bringing forward town meetings. All of these are done to move the town in a forward direction. Once in a great while, this board has the opportunity, or perhaps obligation, to look at the past, to learn from it, and helps set a better path forward for everybody. Obviously, none of us at this table were in a position of authority back at the time. When given the choice to rest on that, our board recognized that this is an opportunity to reach out rather than close down regarding the victims of Sheehan. I am proud of each member of this board for that, and our administration for supporting this, as well as past board members, specifically Mark Sullivan and Linda Walsh, who had key leadership roles at and away from the table with the Sheehan issue. We feel our town is stronger now because of the courage that the victims have, and we are grateful for the opportunity to address them tonight. I would now like to read our thoughts directly to the victims. Not having walked in your shoes, we are not sure what the reception will be. If it brings comfort to one person or a few, that's our hope. If it does not to others, we understand that, but we wanna offer some honest sincerity and take the time to say that we believe you and we are sorry for your pain. So the letter goes like this. The board is decades removed from the tragic behavior of Bill Sheehan, but we recognize the office we hold dates back to that period. We hold today the responsibilities others held before us. We affirm to the victims that we believe their statements, that these criminal actions took place, and we deeply regret that they did. We, the leaders of today, offer our sympathy and condolences for what was done to you. We are truly sorry for your pain and your suffering. On behalf of Foxborough, we regret that this individual abused you and want you to know we remain committed to doing all we can to prevent such actions in the future. It is because of you, your bravery and willingness to share your traumatic experiences that have made and will continue to make every effort to prevent this from happening again. We want you to know that the present leadership of this town, which we represent, deeply cares for you and regrets the damage done to each of you, and we hope that our efforts to protect children, since you shared your stories with us, bring comfort to you. And this, your speaking up is a greater service than we could ever ask. And this has been put on our letterhead with each of our members signing it. And I gotta say, this is not preempted, this was not an attorney request or negotiated. This comes from the heart of the selectmen. We're a little bit in uncharted territory here from our experiences, so I'll leave it at that. If anyone is, wants to respond to the board, you're certainly welcome. Chairman had said you have all the time that you need. If you don't, we understand that as well and take it the way it is offered, and we can offer you copies of this as well. So again, we are truly sorrow, sorry, and present it back to the chairman.
Would you allow me to speak? I think it doesn't matter.
Yep, no, you can sit.
Thank you. I wrote a prepared speech.
Just for, for the record, can you?
My name is Danny Smith from Middleboro, Mass. I was a resident here in town until the late eighties. Graduated from Foxborough High School in nineteen eighty-four. But I, I, I'm gonna go off script for a minute. Proudest moment in my life was standing with you, Jim. Proudest moment in my life was standing in front of the state at the Joint Judiciary Committee and telling them, you know, why I felt that the laws should be changed. And I cannot explain to you how it made me feel about myself. And for that moment, I owe you an eternal eternity of grateful thoughts and feelings.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I appreciate all of you. I know that all of you weren't here, you know, when the events happened. None of you were in power. None of you, you know, I can't believe that any of you would've done what was done in the past. It, it, it's just not what I see from the leadership today. But that being said, the speech that I wrote, or the, you know, the quick little, it, I started with a quote from Winston Churchill. Winston Churchill once said, "You have enemies." Good, it means you've stood up for something sometime in your life, and I mean that. What you're doing is standing up for something, and it's gonna make enemies, it's gonna make people uncomfortable, and for that, I owe you a debt of gratitude. What is an apology? According to the online version of the Oxford Dictionary, the most common meaning is a regretful acknowledgement of an offense or failure. So what does a formal apology from the town of Foxborough mean to me? I can tell you, I can tell you what it does not mean. It does not mean a formal closure of the offense. It is by no means the final words on the failure of the town to protect a large number of children. It does not ease my pain or soothe my mind, it doesn't heal the scars. I struggle with my scars every day. Like all emotional wounds, they are rarely visible, lurking beneath a veneer of calm composure. Like all wounds, they hurt when they are probed, however many times, the people that touch the wounds are unaware of the inner pain. I ask that everyone that hears these words to try to understand the pains of a stolen childhood. But then, once again, an apology is a regretful acknowledgement of a sin of the past. I must credit the current members of the board for the acknowledgement. I must also note and commend the efforts of these same people, of you, in, in your attempts and your efforts for the prevention of this type of crime in the future. In particular, I personally credit Jim for his tenacious support and drive. Finally, a word of advice for Foxborough, from Maya Angelo. I did, I did then what I knew how to do. Now that I know better, I do better. Thank you very much for the, for the letter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to hear a committee finally, after forty years, take ownership. My committee, although charged with training and spreading awareness, has become a place for survivors to vent their frustrations. So it's great you guys are on the same page with us, and whether we were before or not, I don't know. Most important is the acknowledgement of the forty to fifty survivors or eyewitnesses that this tragedy really happened. For the past forty years, survivors bravely came forward, basically heard silence in return. I hope the board's declaration today will be repeated by the other committees that, in some cases, had a far greater responsibility. Thank you, Jim, and the rest of the members.
Thank you.
Bill Dudley, thirty-six North Grove Street, here in Foxborough. I just wanna thank you for the apology. I know this is outside your, the normal business that you do and conduct on behalf of the town, and it's my hope that it's a healing gesture to some. And I know it took a lot of courage for you to do it, so thank you for that, and thank you, Jim, that you've consistently reached out to us for four years without wavering. We're grateful for that. I was texting earlier also with the Sheehan survivor in Florida, Aaron Averhart, who I told him I would also pass on his thanks. He's very grateful for this as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Anybody else have a response or anything else they'd like to say?
Linda Walsh, if I may add, I just wanna say, um, thank you from the town of Foxborough. And for all the people that do come to the trainings that remember things, it's important what you've done, and it's a long time coming. We can't change the past, but we certainly are making a bright future for Foxborough and bringing it back to the town that, and the gem that it is. So thank you, sincerely.
Thank you. Before we move on, I just wanna say that in spite of what happened, like Linda said, we, we can't control it, but through, through those efforts of, of the committee, it is, it is definitely making a difference going forward. So, Jim, thank you. The rest of the committee, thank you. Okay, being a little bit after seven fifteen, Randy Scollins, public hearing, tax rate classification hearing?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think then the committee can send it out.
All right, so, good evening, members of the board, and members of the Board of Assessors are here tonight. This is the annual tax classification hearing. This is a, there are actually a couple actions that the board will be requested to do tonight. One is to determine whether or not you wanna continue on with the classification that is currently established here in the town for establishing the tax rate, that being the fact that there is, there were actually two rates, one for the residential and one for the commercial, industrial, and, and personal property taxes that, that are established here in the community. The, the second thing will be to actually, to approve the actual rates themselves, amongst that actually, amongst that occurs. So, at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Randy and, and the committee for their presentation to the board.
Thank you, Bill. And the, the purpose, for those who maybe are new to, new to this process, maybe one, and anybody watching at home who's new to the process, very briefly, the purpose of this hearing, oh, I think we need to read the.
I have the real, oh, the actual notice, okay.
You read the notice?
I thought there was an actual.
I don't have anything to read.
We don't have the actual.
The hearing wasn't in a packet. The, you have the actual.
I do not.
Notice.
Do you have it, uh?
Can you pull it up?
Can you pull it up on the screen, the phone?
Is it published?
Hold on a second. Published, right?
Do you have, you have internet access?
Uh, no.
Hold on a second.
Is there a newspaper?
Yes. I'm gonna, Foxborough Reporter next to the chair.
Saved by the paper.
Hard copy newspaper printer.
Look at that, saved by the Foxborough Reporter.
Saved by the reporter.
Reading from the paper, Foxborough Reporter. The Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough will hold a public hearing at the media center, at the Foxborough Public High School, Foxborough, Mass. on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven fifteen, with the Board of Assessors, chief assessor, and the finance, finance director, to review property valuations and the total values of all properties subject to taxation in each of the four classes of real property as defined by law. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the adoption of a residential factor and, and then determine, within prescribed limits calculated by the Department of Revenue, what percentage of the tax burden is to be borne by each property class. The Board of Assessors, chief assessor, and the finance director will provide information and data relevant to making these policy decisions, including the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and have the right to provide oral and written comments or suggestions. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass., Mark Elthman, clerk.
Great, thank you. So the hearing is a required annual touchstone along the way to having the town's tax rate set and ultimately approved by the Department of Revenue. Once the classification decision is made by this board, the last components of the detailed documentation are submitted to the Department of Revenue for final review, and then, assuming everything's in order, we get a pretty quick approval. So our goal is to, to mail out the third and fourth quarter tax bills, the actuals, by the end of December with a February first and May first due dates. At this point, in the past, I've gone through the executive summary, I'm not planning to go through the hard data, certainly we will take any questions on it. If that's the board's pleasure, I can do that to fully inform folks about what's contained here. So I break it down into, into different pieces. The first piece is the tax levy itself. The tax levy is increasing by one point eight-three million, or four point two-two percent. The increase is comprised of two point threat, two point three-seven percent, or one point oh-three million, as allowed by Prop two and a half. It's not two and a half because you can't increase on debt exclusion, so there's a math thing going on there. And then there's a reduction of thirty-five basis points, or one hundred and fifty-two thousand, in decreased excluded debt due to the scheduled amortization of existing debt, and there's no new debt. So the total tax increase on pre-existing property is two point oh-two percent, or eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. New growth taxes added two point two percent to the levy, or nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. We continue to tax to the levy limits allowed by Prop two and a half. However, Foxborough has no general overrides built into the levy, whereas ten of the fifteen area communities have an average additional general override levy capacity of four point four million. The next component is the values themselves, which is the assessor's responsibility, is to determine value. The FY seventeen total taxable property value in the town increased by three point seven-nine percent, or just under a hundred and six million. The average single-family residential values, including condominiums, increased by one point seven percent. The average commercial, industrial, personal property, otherwise known as the business values, increased by six point six-four percent. The average single-family property value, including condominiums, increased in FY seventeen by sixty-seven hundred dollars to about four hundred thousand. The average single-family property value excluding condos, so just your single-family homes, has increased in FY seventeen by sixty-five hundred to four, four hundred and thirteen thousand. The residential class of property totals seventy-five point eight-four percent of all property value, which remains significantly higher than the two thousand and ten baseline year, the remaining twenty-four point one-six percent of property values associated with the business property classes. Over the last seven years, residential property has increased from a low of seventy-two point eight percent in fiscal ten, which we consider our baseline year, of the total valuation to the current seventy-five point eight-four percent, or three, a full three point oh-three percent. This shift results in the continuing trend of more of the tax burden following on residential taxpayers and on business taxpayers with a single rate. However, in fiscal twelve, the Board of Selectmen equalizes this trend by splitting the tax rate, which had the effect of maintaining the tax burden split of fiscal two thousand and ten, so back to the seventy-two point eight percent, twenty-seven point two percent split. If the town reverted to a single tax rate at this time, the tax impact to all residential taxpayers in fiscal seventeen, resulting from the, the seven-year trend in, in value shifting away from business taxpayers, is one point three-seven million dollars in additional tax burden in FY seventeen alone. That's values. On the tax rate itself, assuming no split tax rate, so if we went back to a single rate, the tax rate per thousand in assessed value will increase by four point nine-three percent, or seventy-three cents for residential classes, and will decrease by eleven point nine percent, or two dollars and ten cents for business classes of property. And that single tax rate would be fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents. Assuming the current split was maintained, as we do have a current split, the residential tax rate would decrease by nineteen cents to fifteen dollars and one cent, and the business rate would also decrease by forty cents to seventeen twenty-five. That's a function of values. As values increase, you know, the rate, the rate comes down typically. The bill itself, so here's where I've tried to summarize four of the several options that the board has. You literally have hundreds, hundreds of options, but I boiled it down, as I have in the past, to, to four, four options, which the Board of Assessors has, has also considered, and they'll give you their recommendation after we go through them. So, assuming a single tax rate, the average, average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by six point seven-one percent, or three hundred and ninety-one dollars to six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. The average single-family tax excluding condominiums would increase by six point six percent, or three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to six thousand four hundred and eighteen. And the average CIP or business tax would decline by six point two-four percent, or seven hundred and forty-three dollars to eleven thousand one fifty-eight. So that's snapping back to the single rate. Assuming the current split was maintained, the split that was voted last year, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by just over three percent, or a hundred and seventy-five dollars. The average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by two point nine percent, or a hundred and seventy-four dollars. And the average CIP tax or business tax would increase by just over four percent, or four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Assuming a reduced split, meaning a little, little less of a split than we have today, that would tend to equalize the tax increase percentage, so trying to achieve a similar tax, tax percentage increase for all classes. The average single-family tax in that scenario, including condos, would increase by three point two-one percent, or a hundred and eighty-seven dollars to six thousand and nine dollars. The average single-family tax excluding condominiums would increase three point one percent, or a hundred and eighty-seven dollars as well, to six thousand two oh seven. And the average business tax would increase by three point three-four percent, or three hundred and ninety-eight dollars to twelve thousand two ninety-nine. And for reference, assuming that the originally targeted split was, was adopted, and that, that's a split that, that was our baseline year in two thousand and ten, which we also may, use that split in, we used it in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and fifteen, the average single-family tax in that scenario, the originally targeted split, would increase by two point four-six percent, or a hundred and forty-three dollars, to five thousand nine sixty-five. Average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by two point three-five percent, or a hundred and forty-one dollars, to six thousand one sixty-two. And the average CIP tax would increase by five point one percent, five point five-one percent, or six hundred and fifty-six dollars to twelve thousand five fifty-seven. And we've got, we listed the top taxpayers in town as well, it's on one of your sheets, but assuming a single tax rate, the top twelve taxpayers in town would comprise about sixteen point three-nine percent, or seven point four million of the tax levy. The remaining business taxpayers would comprise. The remaining business taxpayers would comprise 11.63 percent of the levy, or another 5.25 Area-community comparisons. And these are last year's area-community comparisons because all the towns are in the process of doing what we're doing here right now, so there is no FY '17 comparisons available, but we have full FY '16 comparisons. And everything seems to move in lockstep, so it's still pretty relevant. So, you know, how do we compare it to our neighbors, our 15 surrounding towns that we typically compare to? So, Foxborough's FY '16 total valuation of property for our single-family homes, 1.75 billion, and that single-family property is 17 percent, or 357 million less than the FY '16 average of the 15 area communities, which is 2.1 billion. So, just to put that in context, so 357 million at a single tax rate, you know, the value of that is, you know, 5.5 million. So, I think you've heard me say in the past, Foxborough has fewer taxable parcels in its town, on average, than the surrounding communities, so, you know, we're a little disadvantaged in that regard. And so, other communities, most of them, endure higher valuations, and it's got nothing to do with the quality of the properties. It's just that they have more property to tax. And the next statistic calls out the difference in the parcels, which is similar. Foxborough's FY '16 average single-family valuation was just over 406,000, which is 1.2 percent lower than the average of the 15 area communities, 411,000. So, again, we're right in the mix in terms of our values. You know, there's no, you know, the housing on average is not substandard here in Foxborough. We're very comparable to all of the communities. Foxborough's FY '16 average single-family tax bill was $6,021, and that's 3.2 percent lower than the average of the 15 area communities, which is 6,220. And seven of the 15 area towns had higher average single-family tax bills in FY '16. So, really, it puts, you know, Foxborough squarely in the middle, and that's primarily a function of the fact that we don't have overrides. Nine of the 16 area communities adopted a split tax rate structure last year, which was consistent with prior years, and Foxborough made 10. Shifting the tax burden from residential to business. So, the board, as you know, has the option annually to maintain a single rate or establish a split tax rate, and in our case, actually, maintain a split tax rate. Shifts in the residential factor allow for up to 15.93 percent of the total tax burden to be shifted. Nobody's suggesting that. And there are examples that are listed here, but I covered the four examples that the Board of Assessors primarily focused on. And with that, unless there's questions on that material, we're going to move to the Board of Assessors' recommendation for the tax rate.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Tom.
So, since 2012, when the Board of Assessors at the time recommended the split rate and the Board of Selectmen approved that, we've come back yearly with this information, and we've kept the split rate, just because shifting it at the time will push more of the tax burden onto the residential properties. So, looking at the, this year's tax setup that Randy has presented to us, we looked at it because over the last three or four years, we've basically looked to share the increase equally across the three classifications that we have. So, this year, once again, after a 3 to 0 vote, we are looking at a split rate, and we were looking at, if you look on page 15, and this is the way the state does it, so in the voted residential factor, if you go down, you'll see, actually, on the left-hand side, you'll see a 1.1020 CIP shift. That is actually the one that we're looking at, because that one spreads the increase equally across the three classifications. So, that one actually has the, so, yeah, right, so that's the actual vote. So, you're looking at a 3.21 percent for residential and condominium. The CIP total is 3.34 percent. So, we're looking at basically recommending to, again, to just share that increase across those, the three or four classifications. So, if you were to vote, you'd have to make the motion for the residential factor of .967499, and that is our recommendation.
So, the board's action, there's two actions. One is to continue with the split tax rate.
Correct.
With classification. And two is the actual factor. So, if what is any questions about the presentation up to this point, you know, this now is the time to present.
I have questions. Looking at the split rate from the surrounding communities, Town of Foxborough, with the increased development, is still substantially less on the split rate for the commercial than the surrounding communities, with the exception of Plainville, Easton, and North Attleboro.
And Sharon also, Sharon also does not have a split.
Right, they have a single, but they're substantially higher.
Correct.
So, if you just look at, just looking at the splits, the commercial rate, I think, from an economic development standpoint, we could apply a little bit more pressure, not substantially, similar to what we did last year, maybe give it a little bit more of a boost and try and move towards that 70-30 split between residential and commercial, and still be extremely competitive on the commercial side as far as tax rates. It would actually help out the residential taxpayers a little bit. You know, you look at Mansfield, $20.58 per thousand on the commercial side. Walpole, $20.73 on the commercial side. Norfolk doesn't have a lot of commercial development. They have a single rate, but they're at 18. So, I think there's a little bit of room to shift a little bit of that burden. Not a lot. We want to be fair, but we want to be fair to the residents also.
What is the ideal ratio? Is it arbitrary? Is it 70-30? Is it 75-25? Is it all dependent on the amount of commercial development?
It's dependent upon the mix that you have, and then recognizing when you have a nice, clean plateau, like where there's been, in our case, substantial residential development completed and valued, substantial commercial development completed and valued. And for Foxborough, that year was 2010. And so, the split of the burden at that point in time was 72.8 to 27.2. That was our plateau. All the new, you're talking about the lodge, the apartment complex, that's residential. It was substantial. The residential at Chestnut Green, the commercial at Chestnut Green, and all the commercial at Patriot Place. All of that was all in and fully valued at that point in time. So, that was the perfect baseline year from our perspective on, you know, how to figure it for Foxborough. So, that's initially what prompted our observation, you know, back in 2012, that, boy, we're really shifting significantly away from that in a very short period of time. And then, that's why the recommendation to try to move back to that particular split.
And if you circle back and you look at the increase in property values, obviously, the residential value has increased by 1.70 percent. Commercial value has increased by 6.64 percent. Yet, if you look at the increases, the residential is paying more of an increase compared to increase in value than the commercial side. So, you can look at it a couple of different ways. You know, yeah, you want to share some of that burden with our commercial partners, but you also want to participate in some of the increased values. So, it's, even though their valuation is higher, they're paying less of an increase versus the residential side. Was that discussed, or?
Well, I, just so you know, my role in the process here, I don't make a recommendation to the Board of Assessors. I provide them with the information. It's their recommendation. They're the ones who understand the property value and the impact on the taxpayers by what this type of decision does. I just make sure they have all the facts to make that decision, so I don't like to...
I think that was addressed to the board.
All right.
I think that was addressed to the entire board.
Okay, good.
Well, you're talking about, so, are you talking the increases in the values of the commercial? Because that's fluctuated over the last couple of years, because, you know, what's going on now is with the values, whereas the residential is, the value is, you know, that's what the neighborhood, that house sold for. Whereas, the commercial is income and expenses. And over the last years, you know, the businesses come in with their INEs, and, you know, they didn't make the money they thought, and, you know, and that's, the value is set that way. So, it's not the same as, you know, you're not going to get, oh, well, that hotel sold for that much money, so that's what the value is.
No, I understand. You know, business is good, so, you know, they did well last year.
Yep.
You know, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. But I'm just looking at, you know, business is doing good. A lot of the community is, you know, in particular, Patriot Place, you know, the community's spending money up at Patriot Place. Business is good. Schneider Electric, the international market, they're doing well. So, this is just a one-year increase. We could always come back and say, look, let's go back based on their INE. So, it's not a long-term increase.
Right.
You know, and I'm not saying, let's go to the 15 percent. I mean, I think we should be more consistent with what we did last year versus rolling it back a little bit and not going to what the target was in 2010. And I think that would give a little bit of relief to the residential side.
Yeah, it's a very modest difference between the two.
I think what we kind of did with our thought process and all of it is that it's a shared burden across everybody. You know, we're all in this together, and we kind of looked at it with, you know, that was the happy medium. It was basically the same for all those classifications and, you know, put that way.
I agree with that.
You know, what you're saying, that was discussed. We did look at the different, I mean, as you can see on that sheet, you can go from the top to the bottom with different valuations, but we, again, that's kind of how, in the past, that's how we've done, we've looked at that, just the shared burden, we call it.
I think one of the things is, you want to be extremely competitive in the commercial market. And I think if we did what we did last year, into 3.49 percent, we're still extremely competitive with the surrounding communities.
On that same page, a couple of down from that, you said, "We were here, originally targeted split." Was that for this year or last year?
That was the 2012. That's where we were at that point. That was the first time we did the split.
Okay.
So, as you see, the residential and business burdens are 72.8. That's where it was at that point. And when Randy talks about the benchmark, that's kind of what we use for a benchmark, because that's when, again, we recommended the split, and the Board of Selectmen that year approved that and agreed with us. And we've throttled that back and forth every year since. We've gone back and forth different ways. And so, the FY 2016 split was the one from last year. And, you know, we actually looked at that one. We just, again, just looked at the equitability of just spreading it across, but, you know, that one was discussed also, the one from last year.
I think back in 2012, when we went to the split, a lot of debate, you know, whether it would affect the commercial base in town. It was a big fear back then, and I think since we did it, we really haven't seen that. I mean, development is still coming in. But a great example of why we did go to the split, if you look at page five, you can see the property tax increases for residential if we went back to a single rate. That's what the board was seeing. And we went back years, and that was the trend. The burden was definitely on the residential. And you could see, it was always like a negative, you know, decrease in the tax values of the commercial. And I think that was, you know, when we were sitting as a board, you know, a couple of the board members at the time, I think it was the end of my first year, were adamant that we would never go to a split tax rate until we started seeing this trend and really the burden. So, when I agreed, you know, when I voted to go to that, I never looked back. I mean, I know that was the right decision for myself, for the board, for the town. And as we go through your scenarios that you had before us, I mean, this whole time, every time we've done this, come before the board, we tried to be fair to both, you know, CIP, commercial industrial property, and the residential. And I believe it is on page seven, really is what we're presenting with you, you know, the .96 blah-blah-blah factor is really what that page is showing there. And really, the burden is equal on all three categories. And like Randy said, you know, you look at that chart, and there's 100 different scenarios we could go through, and it's just trying to pick the right one that's fair. And the good thing about it is, it's an annual thing that we can look at every year.
So, I mean, as businesses do well, it's an opportunity to, you know, everybody to kind of, you know, take, not take advantage, but participate in that success. And if business is down, you know, you've got to take a step back as well, because you do want us at this time.
Right, and that's why the businesses have the benefit of income and expense on their side, where the residential taxpayer does not. You know, if someone loses their job or gets their pay cut, you know, they don't have that option to, you know, to put that into play with their tax bill.
Right, which is another reason to kind of, you know, shift that burden a little bit.
Exactly, and that's one of the big reasons we did.
And one of the things, too, is we try to let the public know, too, is when you're talking about, you know, the business values and things like that, we're not always just talking about, we're one, we're talking about the little mom and pops downtown, and, you know, and I know the board is working diligently to get the SOAR and get some businesses in the downtown, so, you know, you can look at it as that, as that, are you creating an incentive to draw the businesses in there that maybe would want to come in here because the tax rate is equitable or something like that? And that's just something that, you know, you've got to, you know, sometimes we think about that, too.
Yep. And if you look at the comps, we're in a good place from that standpoint. Any other questions?
Good.
Being this public hearing, are there any comments from anybody in the audience? Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, close the public hearing. Second, any further discussion? None, votes in favor?
So, the first order of business would be to determine if the board wants to continue with classification. So, a motion would be to ask the board to continue, if it is your pleasure, to continue with tax classification.
A split?
It's referred to as classification.
Oh, okay, I see.
You could actually do it in one motion, just by selecting the factor. A factor of one would mean no split tax rate, and then a factor of less than one would A factor of one would mean no split tax rate and then a factor of less than one would mean the appropriate split tax rate.
Say that again?
You could do it, you could accomplish all, with just one vote, just by voting on the residential factor itself. That's the factor that's used to, to either shift or not shift. So a residential factor of one keeps a single tax rate, so no classification. If you choose a factor that's less than one, and we have a few to choose from, then there's the, the split rate that goes along with that.
And then we still have to re-take another vote on what it is or just one vote on the factor?
Randy suggests you can do it in one vote. I'm, I'm just used to seeing it done in two, but it is not, there's no, he's not, he's not incorrect.
I think my preference is to have it in two because I think there's probably discussion on, on both topics.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll start with the first one and, and it's a move to continue with the classification.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion?
Just an observation under discussion. I remember when it was painful to come in and have that discussion about splitting it where it hasn't traditionally been split before. But I also remember, and it was probably more from the board than you, it was, it was a nonchalant saying, we can always go back. Because, you know, the brick and mortar dropped in value, so the tax rate had to kind of follow to, to equalize it out. But over the last four years, it surprises me how difficult it is to go back. It was kind of nonchalantly saying, we can, we can revalue it next year and go back. So I'm hearing, we can change it and go back on these differences. It is difficult because every year you're going to offend somebody. You're going to offend the taxpayer who's a resident or a business. So it's just, just wanted to have that when we talk about splitting the rate or not splitting it. I guess my question is when you're looking at the area communities in your data, what area communities still have a tax rate that is not split?
You've got, got five. Go back to that page fourteen.
Yeah.
Fourteen, so you've got, starting from the top, if you go to the far right-hand column, residential factor, it's the second to last column. So we see a one, that means they don't have a split. So Easton, Franklin, Norfolk, North Attleboro, Norton and Sharon.
Okay.
So, and it typically will follow along the lines of if there is limited commercial like Sharon, they're not accomplishing a lot with a shift. Or in the case of somebody like Franklin where they have the largest, the second largest amount of property to, to value and they've got a, they're in a, in a, in a good place, revenue, a good place, you know, with their, with their rates. You know, they don't, they don't see the need. And then you can look at some extremes. You can look at Norwood where every year they come close to maximizing the shift to, to business to, you know, keep their residential as low as possible.
So they're, they're probably the highest town that I see that has a differential, seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-eight?
Right, so anything, like if you look at, you know, the, the ones that we've been discussing here tonight, I'll just round it to ninety-six. You know, that's the, we're the, the, I'm going to say it the right way so we understand it. The, the least split, if you will. I think Walpole is, is close to us, but everybody else has what I'll call a more aggressive split, a larger split to, to business. I, I think that's what Dave was, was noticing is that comparably, as far as splits go, you know, Foxborough is, whether you chose the one or the two that were discussed, is, is very competitive from this perspective. Thank you.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Good.
For the purpose of discussion, move to accept the res factor of zero point nine six seven four nine nine.
So that was, that was the Board of Assessors recommendation?
Yes.
Correct. Or a different one from the chair?
Is that seconded?
My seconded.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? All those against? Okay.
Thank you. We'll wait till the end of the meeting, I'll have you sign the, the one sheet of paper these weeks. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Lady?
Thank you, guys.
Gentleman, lady?
Thank you.
All right, a little bit before eight o'clock. Bill, special town meeting warrant reviewed, discussion approved?
Yes. Okay. So Chairman, Members of the Board, you have before you the, the most recent version of the warrant. And includes in it the revised language relative to the, to the item relating to the downtown sewer, which is Article thirteen. The Article fourteen, we are recommending postponement of that item at this point, is not ready for consideration. So we, we'd like to move that to the annual town meeting for consideration. And item, Article numbers, Article sixteen has been acted upon by the Economic Development Committee. They, they recommended that the, that the item be, be not approved and, and to be removed from the warrant. That was, then later, then later discussed, that was then later discussed at the, the AdCom later that night. So there was further, there was further discussion about that point. So that, that, that consideration is before this board at this time. The only person who can actually take an item off the warrant would be the board, since there's your warrant. You have a letter that was submitted to by the Chairman of the Economic Development Committee. Do you want it?
Yeah, Lorraine?
Well, you want to have Lorraine read it into the record? Just for the, for the purpose of everybody who's listening, items, fourth item, six, Article sixteen as it currently stands is, is an item, is a, was a request for a liquor license for an all alcohol package store license for the Route one forty Foxborough Boulevard node. That is, that is currently under consideration.
Thank you. Lorraine Brute, Chairman, Economic Development Committee. The memo that you had before you summarizes information that Economic Development Committee discussed on this article. So I wanted to read it into the minutes so that the public could understand the process that we went through and also the rationale behind our vote. At the request of the Town Manager, the Economic Development Committee met and discussed the article petitioning for special legislation for a package store all alcohol license. Review of the article occurred at three consecutive meetings held on October nineteenth, November second and November ninth. On November second and ninth, information in support of the article was presented by the legal representative of Hops and Grapes and a spokesperson and owners of existing package store licenses spoke to the reasons why this article should not be supported. After consideration of all information presented, on November ninth, a motion in the affirmative to support the request to seek special legislation was presented to the EDC for a vote. The EDC voted unanimously zero eight zero against the support of the additional license for the following reasons. The proposed location for the new all alcohol license for Hops and Grapes is approximately one mile from the newly purchased all alcohol package store located in the center of town, Foxborough Wine and Spirits. Based upon previous experience of current license holders, the proximity is expected to have negative economic impact on that new business. Foxborough Wine and Spirits made a significant investment to stay at that location and the EDC supports that investment as aligned with the master plan focus on development of the center of town. There is an existing wine and malt license, Antonia's Deli, in the Forbes Crossing development site of the new hotel, located within the same development node as Hops and Grapes. With two package stores located in the same development node, density of service is considered adequate. Both stores will benefit from the development at Forbes Crossing. There are currently four package store all alcohol licenses and an additional fine, five wine and malt package store licenses in the town. Given the population density and the number of existing licenses, it is the opinion of the EDC that the creation of an additional all alcohol package store in town will devalue the existing license holders' investments. Creating an additional package store all alcohol license will free up their existing, the existing beer and wine license for placement elsewhere in the town, further increasing the expected negative economic impact on existing license holders. The Economic Development Committee is working to support the thoughtful economic improvement of the town. Ultimately, the EDC does not see that this request will contribute to economic improvement, but rather will have a negative impact on existing liquor business owners. The EDC views this proposed article as unfairly providing an economic opportunity to one business at the expense of other businesses. The Economic Development Committee is respectfully requesting that the Board of Selectmen remove Article sixteen, a request for a package store all alcohol license from the warrant of the special town meeting scheduled for Monday, December fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I just wanted to read the names of the members who voted in opposition. Lorraine Brute, Mark Greben Senior, Dan Krantz, Mike Stanton, Kurt Yagian, Stephen Coote, Tim Keneely and John Eva.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know if there's any questions I can answer.
Any, any questions?
When you guys, when the Economic Development Committee discussed this, did you guys discuss any potential economic benefit to that plaza where Hops and Grapes is? By having a full liquor license there?
We were focusing on the issue of, you know, the package store license.
So focusing on competition between the other licenses and having too many licenses?
Yes.
Okay. When, when you guys, when the board came before us with the two licenses that we requested for Forbes Crossing that we got, your whole, they wanted two pouring licenses and a package store license and it was all because of economic development. So I don't know what has changed.
What changed was that the Economic Development Committee had not heard the response from the existing package store owners. So when that information came forward, they were brought to the committee and presented all of their information. And based on that information, Economic Development came back and requested that that request for the package store license be taken off of the warrant.
I think that needs to be clarified because that was, that was at the annual town meeting.
That was at the annual town meeting.
Correct.
That's when it got taken off last year.
Last May, right.
At the last, sort of last, like last minute.
In April, yeah.
With all of the development in that end of town, I mean, I, I kind of see it as an economic tool for that end of town. I always have, still do, so.
Is, is the, the bigger concern the fact that there'll be an available wine and malt license available? Because you have competition there now anyway. You have an existing competition between beer and wine. That's, no matter what happens with this article, that's, that's going to be there. The amount of business as, as was portrayed or, or acknowledged at the EDC meeting was beer and wine's about sixty percent of their business. So we're really talking about possibly forty percent of the business in, in, in liquor. The way it's, it's, it's being portrayed is it's a brand new license. It's not a brand new license. It's an upgrade of an existing license. So I think that needs to be clarified. It's not a new license. It's an upgrade of an existing license. So that's, that's number one. Number two, Antonia's Deli is a deli that happens to sell beer and wine. It's not a package store. Although it has a package store license, it's not a package store.
I would fully expect that their business is going to take off significantly when the hotel opens.
Right, but they're right across the street. So people can walk from the hotel and go buy beer and wine. They're not going to get in their car and drive down the street. So that, that's, that's another issue. And then devalue the existing license holders' investments. It's been said that it'll devalue. But I haven't seen any data. It's, it's an existing license. They're already competing. So obviously I wasn't in, in agreement with the, with the EDC. I don't have a vote. I made my case. I lost. But I think it's important to note that if we did take it off the, the warrant article, they just need ten registered voters to put it on the, on a warrant for the annual town meeting anyway. So if this is so bad, let's put it to the voters. Let them decide what's, what's right and what's, what's not right in that economic development node.
I mean, I think the point that we, we talked about was that had we had the original information, this would have never been brought forward as a recommendation last spring. So we were asked to reconsider it.
Brought forward before though, I mean, you were looking for one for the plaza.
It would have never been brought forward at that time if we had that information, but we didn't have that information, unfortunately. So this is really something that would have never even been on the radar if we'd had that information.
Even though it was an existing business that for years has said, I want one, I want one, I want one. I would think the town would look into, how can we help an existing business?
Just to clarify that, that, that was the purpose of the questionnaire, was to, was to first seek the input from those existing license holders. And that information was, what came back from that was concern from some of the liquor license, current liquor license holders about expanding the, the business possibility. And also the requests from Hops and Grapes to actually expand their license from a wine and beer license to an all alcohol license. That was, that were the only two responses we really got from that survey, which was sent to all the current license holders. So that was an opportunity to, if we, and the, and the reason why that was done was because the idea was if we're going to add, ask for more licenses, we should at least ask the existing business holders if they want one, if they want to change. And that was, that was the purpose of that. So that's what you got back from the response, which yielded the, the, the further debate to the Economic Development Committee about whether or not, from, from the existing license holders, whether or not that's an appropriate request.
And I think, you know, the, the survey was very clear that there are no promises made because of interest expressed that anything would happen. You know, I think-
It was more of a courtesy request.
Exactly, and so again, I think when the committee took into consideration geography, experience of impact from other businesses opening in proximity to each other, that's really what resulted in us unanimously, you know, voting against it.
I, I will tell the board, I've, I've heard all the, the conversation from all the meetings. I've been to all three meetings at the EDC and I've also been to all the meetings at the, at the, at the AdCom. And I've not been persuaded by the argument that the license is not needed. The reason why is, is somewhat to what the chairman has stated, is that there is no data that shows that that's in fact the case. What you have however is a new growth element going on in that section of town with another hotel being built as well as another two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty apartments being built literally down the street. The, the, the license holder who is currently requesting the, the additional license has indicated that, that many people come from other, other locations outside of Foxborough off of two, off of one forty and, and ninety-five that indicate that they would like to buy spirits from his store, but they cannot because of course it is a, it's just a beer and wine sales location. He also gets a lot of business from within the, the plaza itself, asking for, for that, that kind of sales. And, and which yielded a survey, which he ultimately took, which, which had about three hundred names from all over the region for people asking for that consideration. But I've yet to see a, a persuasive argument showing that, that there was no basis, that it shouldn't be, that shouldn't be considered because on the basis that there was, that the- because on the basis that there was, that the need is not being met. Or is already being met. In fact, what I've seen is that just the opposite. Is that, that, that area's starting to grow now. And in fact, business is actually going out of Foxborough into Mansfield to do that business. I know that the gentleman in the center of town is, is concerned about his business, but this, this town is already focused, as well as the committee is focused on, trying to grow the downtown by adding new opportunities all over the place. You know, with sewer opportunities and, and possible rezoning of areas, that will actually grow, which will help his business as well. So we're not looking to hurt his business. I think this, but it is an opportunity to, to help a person who's had a ten-year business that's been in place. I think that the consideration should be given to the town for, for at least considering that.
And I kinda think we've discussed it now for well over a year or so. Put it on the, the warrant and let the town decide and we're done with it, one way or the other.
I think that ultimately, I think that is the case, where, where the town ultimately decides that, that determination, they determine whether or not there is adequate need or not. If, if that is in fact the case, then the issue doesn't come back.
You know, again, I think I'm just providing you with the opinion of the Economic Development Committee.
That's right. I respect their opinion.
It's a group of ten business people who have evaluated all the information and feel strongly enough to vote in opposition.
Well, we, we certainly, we certainly appreciate the debates that, that took place at the Economic Development Committee.
I respect their opinion completely.
And, and their input is, is extremely valued. So, you know, I think if it stays on the article and there's not a letter of support from the Economic Development Committee, I don't know how, how AdCom's gonna look at this. But, you know, depending on how they look at it, is gonna really determine if it's gonna be a, a yes vote or a no vote. But at least the, the, the people at town meeting will decide this fate. And then if, if they voted, they vote it down, then does it come back? It's, it's done, it's done with. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't like.
Go ahead.
I don't like making, making decisions on, on behalf of whether, whether people can vote on something or, or not, so. Ginny?
I, I attend, I didn't attend, attend the EDC meetings, but I have attended the AdCom meetings, which the EDC did come before the AdCom and made the presentation, plus the owners of the existing licenses did come. And this is an additional license. It's, it's adding a full liquor store to the, to the number of licenses. So it isn't, it's not just an upgrade. It's an additional license. And also what, and, and actually at, at the meeting, I asked the, the owner of Hops and Grapes that if, if he has always wanted to change his license from wine and, from beer and wine to the all alcohol, why didn't he purchase the all alcohol license that was available? I believe it was Epicure, one of those stores. It was available a few years ago. So he had every opportunity to upgrade his license and, and he said that, you know, I can't hold two licenses. Well, you can hold two licenses. But then one of the other store owners, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, the lady. She also started off with a beer and wine license. And then when a full alcohol license became available, she got, she purchased, she, she paid what, ninety thousand dollars for the beer and wine?
For the beer and wine. She didn't, she got a free, got a free alcohol license.
Right, right. But, but the thing is, she, she waited. And she had put the ninety thousand dollars in and then she upgraded because it, it was made available.
And the other gentleman actually spent sixty thousand dollars for his license.
But, but also the downtown, the, the person at the downtown put in a substantial amount of money in, in renovating and, and upgrading his license. And, and, you know, I, I listened to all the arguments and it, licensing is a controlled, it's controlled by the town. You can't just, I mean, we can have five nail places in town. We can have six pizza houses in town. But you can't, everybody can't just decide that they wanna have a liquor license. So I think those, I, I think it's very important that the, the town is cognizant of the people who do have these licenses and put great resources, you know, money, time, effort to maintain, to maintain them. And I just think if you, if you do this additional license, you're cutting in to that pie. That very regulated, limited pie that the town of Foxborough has. So my, my biggest concern is, you know, when a license was made available years ago, why wasn't, why wasn't it purchased? And that's, I can't, I can't get over that, that if, if, if an upgrade was so important, then that's the time when the upgrade should've been made, when a license was made available.
Yeah. Ginny had made a couple of statements. I was going to stole my thunder a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's great. But you, I, I wasn't able to attend the AdCom committee. Do we have a feel on, on, on their thoughts on, on this yet?
Well, they, they didn't vote on it. They're gonna vote, I believe, tomorrow.
I think they're gonna wait to see how this board reacts.
Believe me, there was lively discussion.
There was. There was. It was on both sides.
Yes. Very good, it was very good discussion.
It was actually a very good discussion.
No, I think, I think, I think the discussions are good. You know, it gets all the, all the issues out on the table. But I think that we have a request. It's a warrant article. You know, they, they wanna bring it to the, to the town for a vote, which is, which is the process. Because it has to go, you know, for the additional license. It has to go to the state, but it, it needs, it needs town meeting approval.
That's correct.
To do that.
That was brought up at the, at the AdCom meeting and I reminded them that it's, the process isn't just going to town meeting. The process is whether the Board of Selectmen decides to remove a warrant article. That's still part of the process. So.
And we're gonna, we're gonna vote on that tonight.
Right, I know. But I mean, it's still part of the process. Process doesn't mean town meeting, solely town meeting. The process is here too.
I was assuming that it was left on the, on the warrant article. I'm not saying it was, but assuming that would be the process.
So my two cents, if I could, and I, I did attend one of those AdCom meetings and followed it. I, I think both of you are saying the same thing. And, and you're, you're right, it is a new, it is a new license. Because it, once it gets upgraded, it's a new license. There was also a lot of discussion on the existing license that comes from Hops. Where does that go? And, and I guess a question back to, you know, my feeling, if what I'm hearing is this article that we're, we're debating now was supposed to be on the last, it was put on there in error. It was removed at the last minute because it didn't have the backup. And it's unfortunate when things get pulled or put on without all the information, but it's, it's a new process. My feeling also is it got back on this town warrant by another mistake because it didn't come with, it didn't come back to this table with the same level of scrutiny as the other ones did. It come, came here and then everyone says, where the heck did this come from? Then it went back to the EDC. They had three meetings and said they don't support it. So had they gone through the process that the other ones went first to the full extent, I don't think it would be here at, at all. And, and we can debate that, but the system is a little bit backwards right now. Let me, so the final question is.
Yeah, because I, I would need to clarify that for you. So as to why that happened.
Oh, good, yeah.
Yeah, so because actually the recollection I had of that situation was that it was taken off, it was actually delayed instead of taken off. It was delayed, taking action on that in the fall because there was more information that was coming about, more research that was gonna be done in that license. And that was gonna be further consi, brought back for consideration in the fall. That's my recollection.
But between then and now, that research never got done.
Oh, no, it was done. It was done. It was just the fact that this, this, the, the, the Economic Development Committee doesn't support it based on the research they did. However, the consideration was to put it back on so the, so the individuals still have the opportunity to be heard before the town.
Correct. Pending the, 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 the level of scrutiny that the other ones came, the other, the other ones had. Let me, let me back up. So the other ones, all of the other ones came to us with fully vetted and with a recommendation. Except this one got pulled back because the information wasn't there.
Well, the, the issue there was that the, the Economic Development Committee wanted to try and do more, they, the rest of the license was simply restaurant licenses, which wasn't used as a tool by Economic Development Committee to actually in, institute new business in other areas of town. Or across the four nodes. There wasn't a lot of research on that. It was just basically, that was the, and we wanted to make sure we, we balanced it, that request across all four nodes. So that's the process that was, that's the committee, the work the committee did. As far as this particular license goes, there was, there was questions raised as to whether or not that was appropriate to go forward and that there was concern about whether or not that you could have an additional license, which we later found out you could. The town can consider under the statute. The question is whether or not it was something that the, the committee was going to, thought was, was a useful tool in this case because there was concern from the license, the existing license holders, that they didn't wanna increase the number of licenses.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference.
So now, and one final question relating back to last year. How much of an influence was it in the decision to pull or to bring it back with respect to that license that they have now being available for another business? From, from my understanding, there was last minute discussion because there was also some concern of where that was gonna go and how that was gonna affect other businesses that got tied into the.
Right. There was some considerations whether or not that could go to another business in town. But the, the rega, irrespective of that, the Board of Selectmen still gets to make that decision. So whether or not that happens or not, it still relates back to here. So there's no discussion of that in terms of this process right now. Some people have raised that. But that's not something that should be considered at this time. It's just the existing, the upgrade of the existing license. So, you know, conceivably, you could have a situation now where the board says, turn the other license back in. You could say, you could say as, as an option.
Could we swap, basically swap license with the state?
You could, conceivably. Conceivably. And let the other one stand in its own merits. If anybody else wants a license, let them make the, make the request.
That takes away that, that so-called beer and wine floating license that can go anywhere in, in town. That one gets turned back in and you end up having a node-specific all alcohol package license that, that cannot be moved.
I think what the argument is though is that that changes the formula of the pie, basically. And that's where the economic impact comes from. So if, you know, you have your current lineup of licenses, if you changed those to all, all alcohol, there will be obviously impact on others, those within that, within that grouping. So this is exactly what we were talking about. That we, we thought that was really one of the strong arguments not to be in support of this. I think the other thing though about it coming off, coming off the warrant in the springtime, you know, we didn't have the information at the time. Once we had that, that, the overwhelming argument was that this is going to economically hurt the other license holders. I didn't have a question really about some of the other things, but I know that there was other, there were other questions being raised. That was really what was the overwhelming argument. So, you know, I just wanna point that out.
Can I ask an Economic Development Committee, you guys, a question, you guys probably have discussed this. I do not know anything about economic development like you guys do. How are package store licenses so much different than adding nine more restaurant license? What's the, what's the difference?
The, the difference is, and, and this is the, this is the way it's been, been presented, is that it's a, the package stores are highly regulated business. So as a result, there has been, over the years, there was a note, there was, there was a formula. It's not an official formula because the, the state has basically required, if anybody who's requested an additional license, legislature will consider that and then they will, they will approve it if the town requests it. There's been, I believe, and, and there were like thirty to, thirty to forty instances across the state where that's happened, where additional licenses outside the, the formula, which is five thousand population, there's one license for every five thousand population. So that's the reason why, why Foxborough has four package store licenses. They wouldn't be eligible based on that formula until they hit, got over twenty thousand people. What's interesting about that, that formula though is that, and this, this was brought up during, during the AdCom hearings, is that that many communities are not shaped like Foxborough and not, and they don't have the same kind of attention that Foxborough has. Given, any given one day, you can have, with, with the number of hotel rooms that you have and the number of pass-through traffic that you have that goes, that attend events at the stadium, you can have a hundred thousand people any one given day that could, that could change that formula rather, rather dramatically. So I think that's the, the, the challenge. In fact, the reason why I'm not so persuaded by that argument is the fact there have been several, several alcohol licenses done, put together on Route One. All those businesses done well. I believe it was Mr. Sivalinsky, who was one of the major presenters here, he said he had his best, best year ever last year. So he's not really been hurt by this business. So there's, and they put new businesses in side by side each other. There's been, there's been new.
Kind of what I'm getting at though, if you look at that, the node where Fox, the, where the new hotels go. Right now you have two restaurants, Jake and Joe's and the Ninety-Nine. We just approved and the town voted for two more restaurants to be their direct competition. So you gotta figure their business is gonna be cut in half almost. I mean, there's gonna be four restaurants where there were two. None of those people are complaining. So I don't get the rationale of, you know, we, we should only have four package store licenses where that community is, that end of town is, is growing. I just.
Well, I, I think, I think in a, in a restaurant scenario, alcohol's not the, the main driver. It's, it's.
It's a supplemental.
It's, yeah, it's supplemental. Where in the, in the package store, that's, that's a livelihood. People go in.
Again, like I said, I'm not in on these meetings. Now, one other question. You had mentioned David, that anybody can get anything put on the warrant with ten signatures?
Yes, for the, for the annual and a hundred for, a hundred for special.
So if we vote this down tonight and Hops and Grapes gets ten signatures, it's gonna be on the annual town, no matter what we say.
That's right.
Then I say we just leave it on here and vote it and be done and one way or the other. Because it's gonna come back anyways. If we vote it no tonight, it'll be on the, the annual town warrant without any discussion, debate, any AdCom or Economic Development. I mean, you guys will probably still do your, your input.
See, I'm, I'm either way on this, I'm not strong, but I, I, it's kinda, kinda intuitive when I hear the argument that we've always used the rule of thumb of one per five thousand, except we're a little different because we've got seventy thousand people come in. So that justifies selling hard alcohol to seventy thousand people that come in. So you give them liquor, spirits, and then they drive out. That, that just blows my mind. I think less is better on this one. A lot of the, a lot of the ifs and whens and buts are about speculation that the node's gonna get developed. Fisher Street's gonna get developed, all these new developments. So, you know, it, it, with the schedule of all the development, give it a year, we're getting nine liquor licenses. Do we really need this one? And I understand fair business and market-driven and all that stuff, but at what point are we gonna say, come on guys, we're, we're fighting over number ten? Where we're also trying to support the businesses that are already there. On a flawed system, I'm sorry. This, this thing was pulled at the last minute. It was put back and we're all scratching our heads where it came from, how to be explained to us. And then when the study came from EDC, unanimously they're saying they don't support it. I was at the AdCom. My guess is they're not gonna support it. Other maybe a few. And when we get to town meeting, I just, I, I have a hard time saying this is the right thing to do at this time. Give it a year, let the developments build, see how the businesses are. And I was, you know, I'm, I was at the meeting and I hear Sivalinsky's business did drop and I'm hearing you saying they had the best year ever. So, you know, it's something I don't wanna, I'm not forced to.
It was how the question was answered. And because quite honestly, the way it was presented to me, he told me personally that he was, he had one of his best years ever last year. So I, I don't, I don't understand which part it is because I know.
I don't know either, but it's, yeah.
Actually, what was said at, what was presented was that when Trader Joe's opened up a mile down the road from, from Route One Liquor, their business decreased fifteen percent. So that was the impact. And, and, you know, again.
How do we know that? How do we know that? I mean, I haven't seen any statistics. They, they verified that. So.
Based upon the businessman.
All right. Mr. Sivalinsky?
If I could. I'm here for Mark Snow on behalf of Route One Liquor's Foxborough Wine and Spirits and Express Mini Mart.
Okay. This is, this is not what we're hearing. This is a discussion. So I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put.
I think I can offer a little bit of information.
I'm gonna put a time limit on it.
Certainly.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. I, I just want to echo some of the comments relating to, there's one pie and, and.
And, and, package store licenses are distinctly different from restaurants. Restaurants lead with food. People come from other towns and go to restaurants. Generally speaking, the reason, the reason the ABCC has followed the rule of thumb of one package store license per five thousand people for the past sixty years is because there's the acknowledgement, it's, it's a homegrown customer base. People don't go out of their town, generally speaking, to go shop at another package store. They shop at the package stores that are nearest to them, generally in their town. With specific regard to Root One Liquors, when Trader Joe's took the little business license from downtown and opened up a big operation on Route One, it seriously injured, from a financial perspective, Root One Liquors. If anybody here thinks that, on another note, if anybody here thinks that the business goes through the roof because we have all these events where seventy or a hundred thousand people come to town, you are seriously mistaken. I invite you to come and sit in the store on Route One. No one goes there. Why? If you're already sitting in traffic to go to the stadium, you're not gonna pull off. First of all, there's nowhere to pull off. There's no parking spots to get in there really to be able to do that and buy anything. Their business absolutely tanks whenever there's an event. So there's the perception, and I understand the perception, because if you're not in that business or associated with that business, you would otherwise think that, oh, I mean, oh my God, all, all these additional people coming into town, they must be hitting, hitting it. And it's quite the opposite. Um, it, it really hurts the business. So just getting back to the one pie, and, and assuming that the ABCC is, knows what they're doing for the past sixty years, and they have recently made, over the last perhaps ten years, some exceptions to the rule, and I'll explain that in one second, they've always believed that, that there's that pie. If you just add a license, you are automatically going to reduce every other package store owner's business in town. Absolute. No question, it has to happen. One other idea on that. This man just spent a half a million dollars to get a license and open a store in the middle of town. If you do what you say you're gonna do, you're gonna give the gentleman down at Hops and Grapes an unfair competitive advantage because you're gonna basically hand him for free the ability to compete head-to-head without having made a single investment to do that. When he opened his business, his business model, meaning Hops and Grapes, his business model was wine and beer. He built, he financed, he, he built, he ran his business based upon that business model. That's fair. There's predictability to that. The rest of the, the liquor store owners, they have to have some predictability as well. They have to know what their competitive market looks like. Now, Mr. Sivalinsky, he's a big boy, he's been in the business a long time. He understood. It's not really fair that that little itty-bitty license that was downtown that then became Trader Joe's was, that, that wasn't fair to him, but that's life. He can handle that. Much the same as if our population gets to twenty thousand and one, because it's, those, ABCC says any fraction of the, the next one over, and, and then there's another license made available. These folks won't be here. I won't be here arguing it against it. But to, to simply hand out a license to a business so that they can then compete on a higher playing level without having to had to made, make any investment, quite frankly, isn't fair. And the pie just doesn't grow. It just doesn't. It, it, it just exists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll, you'll be afforded the same time limit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Peter R. Clark. I'm an attorney from Mansfield, and I represent Ashish Raval and his family that have owned Hops and Grapes since two thousand and five. Um, with, the arguments that I just heard my brother, Mr. Stoppa make are the same exact arguments that he made to the AdCom and to the EDC. And the arguments just don't hold water. And the reason that they don't hold water is, is several. One, a liquor license is not meant to be a profit motive to the half a dozen people that, you know, that, that have the liquor license. Those that have a liquor license do so at your pleasure, and they do so as a service to the residents of the town of Foxborough. So, you know, when, you know, when, when he argues that, you know, that the, the pie is, you know, is a small with extra cheese, fine, but what we're looking to do is now make that pie, you know, an extra-large with, with everything but anchovies because we're looking to bring people in, we're looking to, we're looking to grow, we're looking to add to the service that the people of Foxborough deserve, need, and want. Um, you know, the, the, the EDC and the AdCom have seen, you know, copies of the petition with over three hundred signatures from people from out of town that come, that, that have come to Hops and Grapes off of ninety-five, off of one forty, that aren't going to Root One Liquors, they're not going to the stadium, they're not going to Route One. They're not going to the, the common or to, to downtown. Um, you have a, a brand-new hotel that will, you know, open up sometime next year. You have, since the, uh, since the last time that the liquor license, uh, process was discussed, you have, you know, two hundred and fifty apartments already built and occupied at the lodge. You have, um, you have the new apartments that are proposed, um, at, near, you know, behind the ninety-nine. Um, what you have is, you know, people coming off the highway, they have a choice, in essence, to go right or left. They can go down, they can go to Mansfield, they can go and do, you know, they can go to Wines and More at, at Mansfield Crossing. They can go to Route one oh six Liquors next to Stop and Shop, or they can come and do business in Foxborough. If they're, if they're on their way to Foxborough, they, you know, way home to Foxborough, they can come, they can do business in Foxborough. They, they can, you know, Mr. Raval has done, you know, very well building up his, his lottery sales, which his, you know, adds to the income, you know, the, the tax dollars that come to Foxborough. Um, so it, the, the, the argument that I used, and, and this will be my final comment, the, the argument that I used at, at EDC and at AdCom is that this is the Uber or Lyft argument. The people that are coming in from Root One Liquors, Mr. Sivalinsky, and, uh, they're afraid of competition. You know, despite what, what Mr. Stoppa just, just said. They're, you know, what they're afraid of is that, you know, that the, uh, their ability to profit um, when they eventually sell their licenses, you know, might be a little bit diminished because there's, there's one more, there's a little bit more competition in town. But, you know, competition's a good thing. Competition is better prices for the residents of, of Foxborough. Competition is bringing more customers into the Joblot Plaza with this, where hopefully this license would be located. Uh, there's, there's no guarantee that you as a board are going to, you know, give out, you know, the, the existing beer and wine license will come back to you if Hops and Grapes were to get the, the all-alcohol, uh, package store license. There's no guarantee that you're going to give it out to anybody else. There's no, that, um, so they, they shouldn't be fearful of that. I think this liquor, uh, a full liquor license is good for the Plaza. I think it's good for the south end of, of Foxborough. I think it will bring more, more people to the town. It will increase economic development. And I don't think it will be at all harmful, uh, from a direct competition standpoint for, uh, for, for anybody out on Route One. Thank you for your time, and
Thank you.
we would appreciate your allowing the townspeople to vote on this at town meeting. Thank you.
Just to clarify one comment, um, I don't think Mr. Sivalinsky's afraid of competition because if he was, he wouldn't be in business for sixty-plus years, so.
Just a la- la- Mr. Sivalinsky, the last comment. And you, you sir, will be on the time limit as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the, for the period of time I'm given. Uh, one thing I would like to say very quickly. Bill, I don't know where you and I were sitting, or you and I were talking about, but under no circumstances, unless the record clearly states, that I ever said to you, we had the best year ever.
I'm sorry, but you did. You said it right at my office.
Really?
Yes, you did.
I was with him, Bill.
He said it. I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't hear things like that.
Well, well, well
I didn't make it up.
Agree to disagree.
Agree to disagree.
Let, let me address that particular issue, right, in the sense of what was brought up as far as when Trader Joe's opened up, and I think anybody sitting here with any type of business mind would realize, and we understood what was coming. And we felt that we were gonna dig in, had to lay off some help, had to turn around, and certainly cut expenses. Because when you open up a multi-billion dollar full liquor license across the street, and somebody says, which in that particular, uh, meeting that we ran it the other night, uh, I don't believe you. I, you, you have to be lying. And this is the comments made to me, when I'm sitting there going, you're asking me that we dropped off fifteen percent. We were expecting in the range of ten to twelve, was a little bit worse, but like I say, anybody sitting here, I think with any business mind at all, would realize, again, a multi-billion dollar operation with buying, buying power that's astronomical, full liquor license, I wish that I was lying and we went fifteen percent ahead. Didn't happen. Second thing, let's just talk about the process here. The process has been like, been in the business a long time. I've never seen this process like this before. When you turn around and it all started with that letter, an invitation to say, who wants licenses? But what was interesting was, it started out Hops and Grapes and Normandy Farms. Very public. I met with Bill, that was a discussion that we had. And they turned around and I said, not only is it a single hit, it's a double hit. You're gonna put a full liquor, liquor license into a location where this gentleman just invested a half a million dollars into in the center of town. And a mile away, the town of Foxborough, the license authority is gonna say, well, we appreciate your investment. We appreciate you spending all this money. We appreciate you taking on this debt service, but guess what? We're gonna put a full liquor license to compete with you a mile down the road. Totally unwarranted, totally unfair. Getting back to the rest of the stores in, 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 in Foxborough. We looked at a pie, a pie that's been there for sixty years. It's one per five thousand. The overwhelming majority of the towns in Massachusetts have followed that rule, including Foxborough. When Foxborough hits fifteen thousand people, you've never seen me here. And when Foxborough hits twenty thousand people, you won't see me here. But when you go outside the box and you cut that pie down, you are hurting our investments. And nobody's expecting that in Foxborough. We work for the Board of Selectment. You're the boss. And we respect that. You control our destiny. You control where we go, how we operate, and in fact, you can't move. And that's the way it is. I have competition that just opened up in Walpo. That's my headache. Five miles down the road, Wines and More opened up. What do we do? Dig our heels in again? Take on competition? We've never been afraid of competition. But when you get hit from within your own community, and like I say, investments, we just put eight hundred thousand dollars into our conflicts out on Route One. We're here in Foxborough. We're part of the community. We're part of the fabric of the community. And all I'm saying is, is that from how this process has taken place, I talked to individuals, nobody even knew how I got on the warrant. I mean, literally, nobody even knew where it came from. And I thought that was not embarrassing. I'm just saying, is this economics? Because what you're doing is you're favoring one store with a free ride to hurt four others, especially the guy downtown. See, the nice part about the package store is in this community, we compete. Irregardless of what he's saying, about afraid of competition, we've taken on competition. We compete amongst ourselves. But one thing that we do do in Foxborough, which I think you can be proud of, we've got each other's back when we're thinking injustice is being done. And when we leave here and it's done and it's finished, we'll continue to compete. But, and I will finish this and thank you for the time, this is wrong. This is absolutely wrong. This is not being afraid of competition. This is not, oh, poor me, oh, poor me, we don't want anybody else. This whole process is non-economics. This process is, seems to be a little political. And I would ask this board, in good conscience, to take this article and throw it as far out the window as you can throw it. Because it's forty-something years in this business, first time I've ever seen anything like this. And you have an opportunity tonight to correct it and like, uh, Mr. DeVellis said, take a closer look and really see the impacts here. I thank you.
Can I just ask Jim or any of them one question? What, what's gonna happen if we vote it down tonight and the, the next annual town meeting, ten citizens get it on and it passes? What is, what are you guys gonna do from there?
If I can, if I can answer that.
Yeah.
The message starts right here. Right? The complicated thing about this is, this was supposed to be a vote on a node. And from very day one, it's brought Hops and Grapes and Normandy Farms. And that kinda confused me to begin with because we thought this was a node. Why were we talking about Hops and Grapes? Hops and Grapes ain't entitled to this license. If this license passes at town meeting, you could have fifteen applications. So what I'm saying is, it's almost like it's set in stone here. It's Normandy Farms was brought up. Now, they're out of the picture. Uh, it's just a confusing process. And even in my, I discussions, right, and being able to say, hey, hopefully the Board of Selectmen would like to hear from their employees, we're saying, well, wait a minute, what exactly is going on? And then it came back, and by the way, the new information from the last time was not information and confusion from us. We never once, in our presentation last year, ever said that the town can't go outside the, outside the box. You can put in for fifteen liquor licenses. You have that power. We never, ever brought that up, ever. And something else was brought up about zoning or whatever.
It was brought to us that, that you guys
Excuse me?
It was brought to our attention that, that you brought, or somebody brought information to the Economic Development Committee, new information, and we were told it was the, the five thousand. So that's what the, this board, that's what this board was told.
And I, I'm, and what I'm saying is, our whole presentation in the minutes will clearly read was that the town is going outside the box. You're entitled to do it, but we're commenting to the fact that you are going, without population growth.
Again, though, back to my original question, if it got onto a town meeting warrant by a petition and it passed at town meeting, what are all, what are the other four existing liquor licenses gonna do? I mean, it is what it is at that point, right?
If I may? Because I know there was a comment about, about a petition from signatures from all the way from here to Aruba, right? Which I don't buy into.
But I mean, he can get ten residents' signatures.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question. And I, you're saying, well, what are the other four towns gonna do? Well, look at Mansfield. Mansfield was brought
Oh, the other four liquor licenses, the other four package
The other four holders.
This could happen next May.
This, it could happen next May. If we vote this down, next May, ten residents' signatures, it gets on town meeting. If it passes at town meeting, what's gonna happen?
Maybe I
What are you guys gonna be doing?
Because I can, because I can answer on behalf of all three of the businesses that are here. I think what would then happen is that the, it would go along a, a more regimented process. It would be no surprise to this board or any other board. It would go through the regular process, the vetting process, and, and the recommendations would be made at town meeting. Everyone would then have an opportunity, if it got that far, everybody would then have an opportunity to have gone through the process, make whatever presentations are going to be made at town meeting, and, and then it rises or falls on its own merits. Um, but this, this whole process has been so disjointed, I think that, that the proper process hasn't been followed, and it ought to be. I don't know if it will come back. I, I was, assuming you're correct that it will come back.
Well, I mean, with ten signatures, anything could come back, I mean
Certainly. But, but then it, then it gets properly vetted in the, in the right sequence. We don't have committees having meetings after the, after your vote, or they're waiting to hear about your vote to decide what they're gonna do tomorrow night. That, that, that's not appropriate. And we, we know that that's not the perfect system. And what I, what I'm, what I have suggested on their behalf is that, so be it. What, what we have to deal with is what we have tonight. Let's deal with what we have tonight, and if it does come back, then we'll deal with that process as it comes up. And hopefully, if, if that's the case, it gets properly vetted and everybody has a chance to, to have their say, and whatever happens, happens. I mean, clearly, it, it would be bad for the current businesses if that did follow what, what you're suggesting, where it came back on and it, and it passed town meeting. Well, there's a lot of steps in there before that happens. And then, and the people at town meeting seem to pay attention with the AdCom and Economic Development Committee and, and, and this board and, and other, and business people have, what they have to say about it. And what I'm suggesting is if it has, if it goes along what's the usual route, and everything's properly vetted, everybody gets their chance to say what they, they, they believe to be, uh, the proper position. the proper position, and then whatever happens, happens. But at least then, the process has gone on correctly.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just one quick minor thing, nothing to do with the vote, but I, people hear what they wanna hear sometimes. I was at that AdCom meeting, and in all fairness to the AdCom and the person that said that comment, in no time did somebody from the AdCom say to Jim, you have to be lying. It was a person that said, I have a hard time believing it because she doesn't go into liquor stores, but she never accused you of lying. And I, and I think that's, for the record, should be said, because that's unfair of what you just said about the AdCom.
You know, I, I was at that meeting too. And when Mr. Sivalinsky said something, that member questioned it. That member was questioning his veracity.
It's okay to question. I mean, that's, that's what we're supposed to do. That's how you, that's how you extract information. So, all right, could we put an end to this?
I'm good.
All right. Is, is there anything else that we need to discuss on the, on the warrants?
Those, the rest of the items have been all gone through. I know that the item fourteen, the downtown rotary's been removed from the warrant as well. So we now have, so effectively, we would, you would have fifteen articles since we've removed the steelworker plant as well at this point.
Which other one did you say was removed?
Uh, that was the downtown rotary. That's been removed. So originally, you had seventeen articles. Now you have, you're down to fifteen under consideration.
And we simply didn't have the compensation report from the consultant in time for you to review it in a timely manner. Have you received the entire document yet? So, in fairness to you, I do feel badly for our, you know, for the steelworkers who are waiting for it, but it's in their best interest for this to be fully endorsed by the Board of Selectmen and reviewed.
Correct.
So there'll be more time and many more.
Yeah, we weren't anxious to get it too, but understand that it has to be done properly.
Is the AdCom going to receive an amended warrant? Because right now, you, you've moved, you took out number fourteen and you added, you postponed number four. Anyway, last, last meeting, they were, they were moving things around.
Right.
And it was very confusing at the time they were voting, so.
We will give them, we will give, we will give them an amended warrant based upon your actions tonight.
This will, they'll get a new draft.
Right.
Okay.
Based upon whatever, whatever action you take tonight.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to vote on whether to leave Article sixteen, formerly Article seventeen, on the, on the warrant? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to remove Article sixteen, formerly Article seventeen, from the warrant article?
Uh, so move. Or do I have to say it again?
You move it. I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded to remove the warrant article. All those in favor? All those opposed? Three, two, to remove.
Thank you.
Now that we've, then the warrant is done, right?
Unless there are any other questions, the, the boards have any other, any other recommendations on any of these articles before they go forward for tomorrow night?
But we, what I'm saying is, we don't have to vote now to finalize this warrant.
You do. You do. This is it.
So this, this is the final?
It's the final version.
Right.
We're gonna give you a signature.
So what I'm saying, do we have to make a formal vote?
We'll, we'll take care of the edits after this.
All right. So we have to make, we have to do a formal vote.
To recommend this warrant as, as, as is presented tonight, based upon your final actions.
So do we have to make a motion to take off thirteen and fourteen, or no? Do we have to move to take off the steelworkers or take off?
In a sense, we just read them down, just so that we have that.
You would. You would.
So which, which, other than fourteen, what's coming off?
The downtown sewer.
Uh, no, fourteen.
No, six.
Well, there's a gazillion different numbers.
This is how the AdCom was last week.
They didn't know what they were voting on.
It might help if someone just reads them down and we're in agreement of what each one is.
I'll make a motion to remove Article number fourteen as shown on this, called the Steelworkers Pay Plan, parentheses, hold.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Motion made, second, twice. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye. And also move to take out of the warrant, the downtown sewer design and preliminary testing. No. No, not that one. Where was the other one? The rotary. Do we have to take that one off too, or is that officially off?
That's, um, you already voted to take that off.
We did.
The ten twenty-six.
Because it's already on the bottom.
Yeah, it's already off.
Okay.
All right.
So still active, I guess?
So.
Through the chair, the number one, Foxborough Center Overlay District Map. Number two, Foxborough Zoning Bylaw Amendment, six point one point two. Number three, Site Plan Review. Number four, Foxborough Zoning Bylaw Amendment, eleven point one. Number five, Municipal Conversion Permit. Number six, DCA MM Use Restrictions Release Request. Number seven, Chestnut Payson Overlay District Map. Number eight, Fund Stabilization. Number nine, Fiscal Year Fifteen Budget Adjustment. Number ten, Disposition of Unclaimed Property Statute Acceptance. Number eleven, Resign Borrowing Authorization. Number twelve, Building Demolition Bylaw Amendment. Number thirteen, Downtown Sewer Design and Preliminary Testing. And I guess the new number fourteen will be the Fiscal Year Seventeen Capital Budget, Budget Adjustment Fire Truck Replacement.
Correct.
So effectively, there'll be fifteen articles under consideration.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Well, no, because, actually, fourteen. I ain't.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry. Fourteen articles. I apologize.
Motion made. Anybody to second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Good night, Irene.
That was easy.
Yeah.
All right. Selectmen's update. I just wanna thank everybody that came out to the Veterans Day Ceremony last Friday. It was, it was great to hear Mr. Kirby not give a speech, he actually had, you know, told a story, which was a very unique perspective.
He's a really, really interesting man.
And it was, it was great and serenading seniors and everybody else that attended. So Mike Johns did a great job, as usual.
He did do a great job, yeah.
He's been.
Anybody have anything else? No? Bill, Town Manager Update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have something that I wanna present to the board members for tonight that was, we became aware of last, on last, last Thursday, which I want everybody to be, I'm gonna pass these out to everybody, one package each. I'll go through the examples, I'll explain it. Everybody have it? Everybody have it? Some extra ones here, too. You? Before, I'll give you one later on. Here, I'll give you one later. So on November, on Thursday, November tenth, Chairman Feldman and I took a ride into Boston to meet with state transportation officials to discuss the latest status of the MBTA service to Foxborough. Some of the board members will recall that, that the last time this matter was discussed, approximately two and a half years ago, there were many concerns expressed about how the service would impact the community. What we learned last week is that a more clear and limited approach is being pursued by the state in bringing this added new service to Foxborough. When the discussion concluded a few years ago, the state took a step back from its initial plan of providing regular community service, commuter service to Foxborough without evaluation, well, evaluation in, in the need to, in the need, of the need into, in the impact to this area. What they revealed to us on Thursday is a more incremental approach toward providing this new service, providing the service on a trial basis to determine if it is viable and to determine what, if any, impacts can be mitigated. As such, the state DOT is proposing to do the following. If approved by the Mass DOT Board, the state would initiate a pilot service program that would begin, that would provide daily service that would begin and end at the South Station in Boston and would begin and the Gillette Stadium, Gillette Stadium Station. Presently, the station is only used for NFL game day service and for some concert events at Gillette. The line would, the line would travel to and from Boston and to, and to and from Foxborough through Walpole. It would not pass through a majority of this community. The trains would operate approximately four weekday round trips to and from Boston and to Foxborough, or a total of eight one-way trips. Parking areas would be provided utilizing a portion of the Gillette, of the existing Gillette Stadium parking lot. Because this would be a pilot program, the MBTA would use locomovers within their existing fleets. Originally, there was some talk of using DMUs or diesel motorized units at this location, but that would mean purchasing new equipment for a program that is still under review. The pilot program would not begin until late 2017 or the beginning of 2018, and would last for approximately ten to eleven months. During that time, the MBTA would, will continue to collect comments, data, and information about this line to determine if there was a long-term viability of this expanded service. This proposed pilot program is scheduled to be reviewed before the Mass DOT Board of Directors on November twenty-first, 2016. At that time, the state would be looking to seek town support for the trial service. It appears, based on the state's previous attempt to initiate this new service, that there should, that there should be a trial period to seek input and understand all possible impacts before fully committing to this new service. Last week's meeting was informative and helpful in that regard. Based on what is being proposed, this trial service would, would have limited impact to a majority of the Foxborough community, but will provide an added benefit to our current residents, as well as those residents who use the current commuter rail service in Mansfield, Walpole, or Sharon. The expanded parking capacity offered at Gillette Stadium will help ease existing parking pressure on the loss from those service, those existing service communities. The expanded rail service should also be viewed as a support, as a positive improvement from an economic development perspective. Both the Kraft Group and Schneider Electric have been notified of this trial service and they view this as a supportive step toward bolstering new development efforts for both Route One and downtown areas of Foxborough. I view this information as exciting news for the town, particularly as it relates to our overall economic development strategies. This will be a learning opportunity, and I am glad to see the state is taking a much more measured approach to its efforts of addressing this commuter rail service, the commuter rail service question here in Foxborough. I also received today a support letter from the town of Sharon, which I'll, I'll share with the board. I didn't, didn't have time to actually, because it came in late today, but it was written by a member of the, of the Sharon Board of Selectmen who indicated that they have, in summary of the letter states that they, they are very pleased to hear that there was some possibility that this, this service would be expanded into Foxborough because currently, the Sharon parking lot is so limited, and, and such pressure on it by existing commuter rail service, that having additional parking opportunity in, in Foxborough would, would certainly ease some of that pressure. And so they, they actually write in support of that and actually wrote a letter to David Muller, the Executive Director of the Office of Transportation Planning of the state, to, to express their, their support for this effort. I also want to point out that the, that this rail service is an important issue for a number of reasons. One is that it is consistent with the town's master plan, in that it actually provides additional transportation opportunities, as well as supports economic development within, within, within the town itself by expanding the possibility of use for Route One, as well as downtown expansion. What's important about the down, while it doesn't necessarily, the train won't necessarily go by there, the possibility exists to further, for a further valuation of that in the future for a possible light rail connection that could connect both, both, both Foxborough and Mansfield for future considerations. But the, the current rail service is, is not supported in Foxborough at all, only except for, for football games and for, for a few concert events, but yet, we're surrounded by it. We're surrounded, there's service in Walpole, there's service in, in Sharon, there's service in Mansfield. In fact, Mansfield and Sharon have two of the busiest stations along the northeast corridor for, for providing commuter rail service into Boston. What's interesting is that this is something that I, I view personally as, as a really, as a really good news opportunity for the community. One is the fact that, that there is, there is existing parking opportunity that exists at the stadium already, which is really an important aspect of providing service, of parking opportunity for, for train service. It's, it wouldn't necessarily impact parking situations around the, around the community other than that, that area which is currently already existing. Second is the fact that we, we've been told, and the Economic Development Committee can support this, is that, that Snyder Electric is, is going through a process where the next five years, they'll have a major turnover in their, in their workforce due to retirements. It could be as much as five to seven hundred employees. As such, we need to look at opportunities where the next, next generation, the millennials, will be working in this area. And they themselves like to be, like to have commuter rail service. They don't like to drive as often as, as, as this generation does, this existing generation. So this provides an opportunity to provide support for the second town, the second largest employer, as well as the possibility of major development of Route One across from Route One from Gillette Stadium, which is, which has our number one employer in the community. So from an economic development perspective, this is a really important boost into the local economy. So what they, what the state has asked in, in the meeting, and I'll turn it over to David at this point, is, is that they actually, that the board takes some position of support for this, for this question that's gonna be raised on the November twenty-first. Again, it's a trial opportunity. If it works, then, then, then it certainly would, they were looking at a regular service. If it doesn't work, then the question will at least be answered, and they'll, they'll look elsewhere to expand service. But this is the largest undeveloped parcel of land between Providence and Boston, and it's, and it does open up the potential for development in that particular area, which is, I think, very important for the community as a whole. So, David?
I, I think this is, this is a tremendous opportunity for the town. There will be no trains going through the center of town. It's, opens up all sorts of opportunities on Route One for commercial development, both in residential, for that matter. Will be able to track, depending on what, what's developed on Route One. You'll have the ability to do the reverse commute, young millennials that like to live in the city, coming out to Foxborough to work and then going back into the city. And then it'll also support our, our existing businesses. I think Schneider Electric cannot be taken lightly with their upcoming turnover in, in workforce. And they were very clear that they're gonna have a, a shift in the age of their workforce. They have a lot of people, I was, I was shocked at the number, that are looking to retire in the next five years. It's, it's in Dover and it's Foxborough for their business. And they wanna stay in Foxborough. This would, this would absolutely help them attract the talent coming out of the education centers in, in Boston. One of my concerns was, where's the train gonna overnight? And I know, I know the, the plan is to try and move it as far away from, was that Howell? Down, down in that area?
Right.
Try and move it as far away from, from there as possible, closest, as close to Route One as possible.
It would only be one train that would be starting up for the next morning, so it would actually effectively be plugged in, is what they, they said to us. So, and that would restart in the morning. And it would be used to, for the commute into Boston.
Yeah, but if, I thought that they were gonna be using their existing locomotive fleet, which means.
Right. But they would, they would use one train.
They're the old, they're the old trains that noisy, that, I thought the DMUs were the ones that they plug in, and they're not gonna be using the DMUs.
Right. They, they, they would use the existing locomotive. There will be one locomotive parked in Foxborough for the commute from, from Foxborough into Boston in the morning.
Running all night.
No, it's, they're actually plugged in, is what, is the answer, was, was.
I mean, this is what, this is what they talked about the first time. And they were questioned about how loud they are. And they said, I mean, the DMUs are less noisy than the trains that we have now.
Right.
So that means that the locomoses that they have now are noisy. They're noisy, they're.
The, the reason why they're not gonna purchase those now is because they need to know whether the service is even viable.
Right.
So they wouldn't make that investment until they, until they determine that.
From, from what, what was explained to, to me, the, the low idle in overnight is at five percent.
Right.
Just to keep the, the engines warm.
And it's plugged in.
It's more of a, it's not what you typically hear when they're under full power.
Correct.
But, it's still, it's more noise than what's there now.
Well, I mean, it's...
If you have to live there, it's more noise than is going on now. I'm just saying that if this is going to be near, yes, it's going to be near Route One, but it's also going to be in a residential area, and I think that has to be a consideration, and I think that's something that the neighborhood that will be affected should have a say on this, or be able to give their input.
Well, they certainly will. I mean, that's the reason why it's a trial basis for a year, for 11 months, is to determine whether or not that is true. It's hard to actually have input on something that hasn't happened yet, so I think up to that, it's only speculation. So, I think the way to address that, and that's the reason why they chose to do it this way, is to find out what the issues are, so they can actually offer some ways to mitigate those. So, I think that's, and before, the previous, I think you recall, the previous proposal was to stop the service immediately and not have any trial bases. And so, this was an opportunity to kind of do it in a way which we could collect the data and understand the impacts that were occurring in the neighborhood.
The meeting that you talked about on the 21st, is that the meeting in Attleboro?
No, it's a meeting in Boston. It would actually be at the State Transportation Building.
And at that meeting, what's being decided?
It's whether or not they'll go forward with the trial program.
And so, how are you going to get input from the people in the town of Foxborough before that meeting?
Well, you wouldn't. That's why it's a trial process. That's what I'm explaining to you, is that it's a trial process, which means that you'll then have the opportunity to have input throughout 11-month period. It's an 11-month trial period.
So, don't you think there should be input from the town just for our imagined concerns, that maybe they could be looking, you know, looking to see if our imagined concerns are true? Do you know what I'm saying? It's almost like, well, here's the trial period, all of a sudden, you're going to have a locomotive in your backyard. Sorry, you didn't have a chance to say anything.
I'm going to actually, well, here's what my response would be to that, is that I don't think anybody truly knows until you actually try, and then, at that point, you present reasons, ways in which it can be actually mitigated. So, and that question is where the train would actually be parked. It may not be that close to a residential unit, so I think maybe that's something we take up with the state. Park the unit closer to the back of the stadium, which is not as close to the residential homes. There's actually quite a bit, quite a large buffer, if you look at the overhead pictures, there's actually a very large buffer between that and the actual residential homes.
I mean, there's a possibility where it could overnight, actually on the other side of Route One, on that adjacent parcel. I think with the limited schedule, it's an active rail line now with the CSX line going through at 3:00 in the morning. With Mass Works' extreme interest in developing and possibly assisting in the development of Route One, I think it's an opportunity to at least trial it and take a look.
So, I actually, I asked Randy to come, because he'd actually done some initial estimates of what potential the development, potential impact might be if we were to allow...
Bill, can I just caution? I mean, I understand, it's nice that Sharon sent us a letter, they're in support, their selectmen are in support.
Right.
So, this meeting's in six days. We've got graphics, we've got meetings, we've got all the stuff. This is not even on our agenda tonight.
Right.
So, now, we're having a debate, and we're asking speakers to come up, and not one person from the public has been notified that they can chime in, and we've got a meeting in six days. How does this happen?
Well...
Having been through this with the MBTA before, you build it and they will come. Now, we're put in a position where, good luck trying to get any discussion done with any of our planning boards, our zoning boards, our conservation, this, the neighbors, within six days, and you're putting it on this meeting, and it's not even on the agenda. How does that happen?
Well, I think the way it was proposed was that there's a meeting scheduled for the 21st.
My question is, on an open meeting law, how does that happen tonight?
Well, it's...
Forget about, I couldn't care less about the MBTA, or business, or economic development, under our ability to talk about something with it advertised to the public. How is this happening?
Well, you can actually schedule it for a hearing, if you'd like. I mean, the board has the...
No, how is this happening tonight?
Because we were just notified on Thursday.
What's the date of the letter from Sharon?
It came today.
What's the date that it was written?
It was, uh, it's a day right here. November 14th.
November 14th?
Yeah.
So, how come, now, did the full board write that letter?
I'll read it to you. It says, "My name is William Height, and I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen in Sharon, Massachusetts, writing on behalf of the entire board."
So, the entire Sharon board knew about this, at least before the 14th, because it was written on the 14th, and we're just hearing about it now, except for...
Well, you haven't met, until then. So, I just found out, I found out last, was it last Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
We went in and heard what they had to say.
Yeah, and this may be a spectacular idea, but having gone through this, having sat through the meetings, listened to the neighbors, listened to Walpole, listened to a debacle from the MBTA and the whole CX line, has anyone learned anything going forward to sit with us, and within six days, they want our input? Because it's going to get built regardless, and then we're going to try it? I just don't understand it.
Let me just address that point, because when, I raised that same question at the meeting in Boston. I said, "Look, that's a pretty short window for our board to even react to this." So, the other option is to postpone that discussion into December. So, that would give this board an opportunity to have, to hold, you know, a meeting and to have the issue presented.
But, so, in hindsight, you're right. But, to prepare this level of graphics, and to get it to this point, and say, "Oh, by the way, in six days, we're voting on this to move forward. Do you have any input?" Please, you know, has the MBTA, the T, anything learned over the last year? I remember those meetings, and it was embarrassing of what was being presented to us, and now they're doing the same thing.
Well, no, so, the question is, they're asking you. They asked us to bring this issue forward. So, the first opportunity they had to bring it forward was tonight, okay?
But, they didn't find out about it three days ago, is my point. If they understood the importance of vetting a process, they wouldn't give it to us on a Thursday and say, "Give us your input in eight days." I don't buy it. I don't understand how this can happen again.
So, the...
It may be the best idea, but to get any type of an educated response, it's not going to be our financial advisor giving it to us now, when it's not even on our agenda. And then, what do we do? Can someone draft a letter tomorrow? I don't understand this.
And what about, has the town of Walpole, where are they on this?
I don't know. I mean, I've reached out to the town administrator, let him know that that was a possible up of consideration. I called him on Monday, just as I've notified this board. So, I did reach out to him. It wasn't like I...
Can I ask a question? Can the MBTA do this, because it's all their infrastructure without our...
It's their line.
So, they could put this in anyways? I just want to get that information. I 100% agree with Jim. We have discussed stuff before that we get something handed to us the night of a meeting and expect a vote. This, like Jim said, this could be the best thing in the world, but we really can't be discussing it much more than we are, because it's not on the agenda. It's under your update.
Right.
And we're looking for a vote.
I think we're looking for a vote. No, I was looking to present it to you, to say, it was potentially on their agenda for the 21st, and they said, "If it's not viable to do that, let us know, and they'll move it to another date."
Oh, okay. I was under the assumption that this...
Okay, just so you know, so, if that's not, wouldn't make clear, I want to be clear on that point. So, they have a meeting set on the 21st. If the board was comfortable with supporting it tonight, then they would go forward. If they're not, then they will move it to a different date.
I said, "We put it on our agenda, because we really can't discuss it anymore."
And, you know, I would like to have more concrete information in regard what their plans are. When I brought up about where they're going to be overnight with trains at Hallwell, the other side of Route One, you know, what is this? Whatever sticks to the wall, and, you know, throw something whatever sticks to the wall, and if it sounds good, that's what we're going for? And then, doing whatever they had planned on to begin with? You know, I mean, it's called trust but verify. I mean, I remember the presentations two and a half years ago. They were atrocious. It was bad in Foxborough, but let me tell you, I went to the Walpole one, it was even worse. They couldn't answer a question. They said one thing one time, and then a half hour later, they said something totally different. So, until I get some real concrete information from MassDOT and MBTA, I couldn't support even a trial run, because I can't, I've got to verify what they say, what they're going to do. Believe me, two and a half years ago was a total, it was just awful.
I think the response here, though, Ginny, is the fact that this is a much more measured approach. Now, granted, it was a short window for us to bring it forward, but I'm doing what I supposed to do, and that's to bring it to your attention. The question is, what does the board want to do?
I think we've got to put it on our next agenda.
That's fine.
That's fine.
All right, so, and if that's the case, I will notify them tomorrow, move it to the next, their next meeting.
And then, what do you, as an agenda item, are you going to have presentations from them?
I'll have to ask them that. I can see, you know, what kind of information they can present. I mean, based upon, this is all we have for information right now, and we can ask them for more information. So, the question is, you know, I'll have to ask them what they're willing to present.
What they're willing to present?
No, what they can present, you know, not the willing, what they can present.
How about the whole plan?
Maybe we put it on the agenda, and then we have this discussion then, and if they send five people to present, or no, you know, we'll find out then. But, I think the gist is, we'd like some information to, and some time to look at it.
Okay.
Got anything else?
It's been a good night tonight so far. Good thing I still have a sense of humor.
We can talk about the two and a half percent that went over well.
So, all right, so, I have the direction. I'll put it on the agenda, and I'll notify them tomorrow to push it off to the next meeting, okay?
And to potentially make a presentation to us.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, that's it.
May Beth?
Next?
She took all, I took all the hits, so she should have it easy tonight.
Reminder, just some updates. Currently, working really hard with Personnel Board and accounts on some policies to begin presenting to the board for their consideration. Under the new bylaw adopted last year, we're going to create and adopt policies, but there's a very declined process by which we're going to do that. So, there are policies that you've already looked at, improved in the past, quarry policy, things like that, vehicle policy. We're going to bring to you, as a refresh of some of those policies, and then tell you what we're currently working on. Some of them have already been discussed in great length, and we want to start the process with those. And then, we're also, the newest one we're looking at is a social media policy, which is really, very important in this day and age. So, through the winter, I'll be bringing those to you for your digestion and...
Are you changing any of the ones that we just voted on, like last year?
No.
Okay.
No, just they're going to all be compiled in the policy documents, where we want to keep them in front of you, in case you have some thoughts.
Are they all working?
Yes, yes. We have, the vehicle policy's been very well adopted, the quarry policy is ongoing. People are great about complying with that, when they have someone who's, for example, if the library is someone coming in for a day teaching a program, they're setting the quarries. We've done all the contractors for the Town Hall project, which is huge volume, but that is also, makes our employees and citizens feel safe, that people are in the facility.
It's a good idea.
Yep, so, those have been working very well. We have two jobs posted on our website, if anyone's interested right now. We had a promotion in the DPW as a result of a vacancy, and now, the entry-level laborer position is open for Highway to Pontefract, Tree and Park, and if anybody's interested, that's on our website. Also, we had, we have an accounts payable position. We had a resignation from a person, Michelle Barteky, who is in the accounts payable position, and so, that's on our website as well. It's listed as the principal account clerk, so it's a little hard, it's, we have a 1952 job title, so, in case anybody's curious, it's an accounts payable position. So, we welcome you to take a look at those. Very excited to be working with the new police chief on some promotional opportunities. We've gone through the process of an RFP for Sergeant Assessment Center, and we have 18 police officers come forward that want to be a part of this process. There are two vacancies, soon to be maybe three, if a promotion happens, if one of our sergeants is supposed to get promoted to lieutenant, we have a vacancy in that area as the chief begins to restructure. So, definitely, there's two openings for sergeant that we're doing this the first week in December. We have 18 people going through the process, six per day with consultants. The chief's looking at, we have a contact in Lieutenant Weston, the chief's looking at maybe making a promotion in that area as well, and that would make another sergeant vacancy. So, a lot of things going on there. And then, just a reminder, Ginny reminded me to invite the board to the MMA's annual conference. There's, it's a two-day conference in Boston, and it's the annual conference where the governor speaks, comes in and does the budget, there's a number of workshops, a trade show, entertainment dinner, but a lot of good networking and informational presentations happen, and it's Friday, January 20th, which I think is also a roundration day, and Saturday, January 21st, the two-day thing at the Heinz in Boston. So, we will be putting in your packets the registration material, in case you didn't already get a mailing of it, so that if you want to go, you can just let us know.
Yeah, what's nice about that is you really get to talk to your fellow selectmen from other towns, and you get a pretty good idea of how Foxborough stacks up to the other towns. And it's really, it's really quite interesting.
I do highly recommend it for, especially the newer members that have not seen it. It's a two-day trade show, starts on Friday, and then, it runs for all of Saturday as well, and it's, it's really well-done. I mean, and Ginny's right, that it's a good opportunity for you to connect with some of your colleagues from around the state, and to hear some pretty good presentations about what's working well, what needs to be helped, where you can pick up some help on some of the issues that you're dealing with. You find that as much as you think you're unique, you're not. You have a lot of things going on around the state that's very similar in their organizations as well.
And generally, we're usually invited to lunch on Saturday, because Foxborough's consistently been a recipient of the Maya Safety Award.
Safety Award.
So, there's a lunch, Maya hosts the lunch and invites whoever's, you know, from the board that's there at the town to accept the award. We'll put that in your packet for next time, so you can take a look at it.
Good.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Action items.
All right. Move to approve the Foxborough Regional Charter School Seventh Annual Road Race Event on Saturday, 10/21/2017.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Right.
Move to accept the resignation of Susan Berlone from the Boydin Library Board of Trustees, effective 11/1/2016.
Second, isn't there? Thanks, Sue, for all your work for the town.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
I agree.
Move to approve tuition reimbursement of $1,326 to Officer Kenneth Fitzgerald.
Second.
Motion made, second.
Question.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Right. Move to approve the Third Annual Light Up the Town Event on 11/26/2016. The event will start at 4:00 PM and end at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Right. Move to accept a gift donation to recreation in the amount of $250 from Cahill Lawn Care.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Right. Move to accept a gift donation to the Boydin Library in the amount of $50 to purchase books in memory of Jackie Rizzo from Barbara Harris.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Right. Move to accept a gift donation to Animal Control in the amount of $140 for adoption fees from Dorothy Chamelimki.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Move to accept a gift donation to Animal Control in... Move to accept a gift donation to Animal Control in the amount of $50 for adoption fees from Edmund Keenan.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Vera, you have anything?
Yes, I'm just hearing this lovely person out of the ground. It's true. I wish that it may happen, that the doctor did.
All right, everybody, so this will be quick.
You've never been quick.
Oh, I'm generally quick. I'm not quick when I talk on the phone to you, then I grill you. Okay, so Marcia, the Lorraine's letter, is that, was that in my packet from this week, or is that something new? I'd like to get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Do you want mine?
Whoever is, you, thanks, Mark. All right. And, yes, I believe the, I believe that is it.